Sorry, I'm just talking on my cell.
Excellent.
I think I have another one.
Minutes, so they start at eight fifteen, right? It wouldn't seem.
A minute, let it set up.
Unless of the timing.
Okay, I just want to remind everyone, cell phones, if you could turn them off or put them on vibrate. And a long meeting tonight, so just a reminder that we are being recorded, okay? Just a reminder and.
Silent.
Me too. Okay, so with being after seven o'clock, we'll start the meeting now. Vice Chairman will read.
First thing on the agenda is old new business, which would be the approval of the minutes.
And we were gonna hold off on them because.
Which are not finished.
And the gentleman not here.
Oh, we're in August, what are we gonna do?
No, we already did those, yeah. No, we just had. We're gonna hold off on that because the gentleman ain't here.
Okay, so it being seven o'clock, the board will hear the first petition, the continued. Petition of Timothy O'Connor, two seven eight Spruce Street, Abington, for thirty-two and a half foot frontage variance, lot coverage variance and finding under one seventy-five twenty-nine and MGL chapter forty-eight, section six, to construct an addition at two seven eight Spruce Street. Property located on assesses plan sixty-one, plot four, in the R twenty zone. This is a continued hearing, correct?
Yes. Used on the SOAR department, located assesses map, plan sixty-one, plot four. PS had no bearing on the SOAR system, two seventy-eight Spruce Street. Okay. Hello again.
Continue who the voting members?
What's that?
Who are the voting members on this?
Ah, just the three of us.
Okay, 'cause it's a continued hearing, right?
Right, you guys, that's why you signed the paper. Work, so you can vote on this one.
All right.
Okay.
Good evening, Sean Riley here tonight with the O'Conners. Now, I'm, if, they were back here in August, if you recall. They were not here in September due to a schedule conflict, which was their wedding and their honeymoon. So I'd like to present Mr. and Mrs. O'Connor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. They already made a presentation in August about their plans. I think you have a copy of the plan where they wanted to build a twelve by thirty-two addition to the right side of their house as you're looking at from Spruce Street. And at the time, I was just sitting in the audience, and there was a question from the board rightfully so, about the status of what is shown as Roslin Street, the paper street, to the right side of their house, and it sits in between Mr. and Mrs. April's house and the O'Connor's house. Mr. April is here once again. And the, the board had asked if we could get some more information about the status of Roslin Street and, you know, the concern at the time was, does the town own it or would it be ever be a public way? So if you don't mind, I wanted to give you some stuff to put in your file. Me being a real estate lover of history, I have a nineteen oh three atlas from Abington.
Wow.
Sometimes I have to refer to in situations like this. And this is a copy of the nineteen oh three atlas with a couple of my colored notes on it. So this atlas shows what was proposed way back in time. And you can see Spruce Street down here with that Roslin Street heading northbound. All right? And I already, I put a dashed line in with big bold letters saying, taken by the United States Navy. The federal government took that property years and years ago in order to create the self, uh, South Wainwright Naval Air Station for submarine killers and all. So that effectively wiped out that part of the subdivision to the northern part of Spruce Street. So Roslin Street was never built, the head of the pond road was never built. Zavine Street became a dead end. And that's how it's been for eternity, well, since the taking by the federal government. And just to give you, just some more information, this is Mr. April's property on the other side of Roslin Street, which is same thing as their plot plan, just shows the layout of Roslin Street. And it shows it being private because it's not a town way, it's not a public way. It, it just is there on paper.
This is from nineteen sixty-two, Sean?
That's from nineteen sixty-two, that's correct. And then just, this is a portion of the official land taking plan from the federal government that I've blown up and colored, just to give you another showing of the, of the area. In pink is the O'Connor's lot. In light yellow is the area where Roslin Street was proposed to be built. And then the, kind of the mustard color is the portion that is actually part of the federal government, the United States Navy and all. And as I mentioned before.
Now, this lane here, has this not been given to the town of Abington?
Has been given to the town, no. That's still owned, the, the, the town, that's sorry, the, the portion that the federal government took is now part of Southfield, which is now part of Union Point.
Which is, which town is that?
It's, it's situated in the town of Abington, but it's not owned by the town of Abington. It's just like, their lot's out of Abington. So if you.
Privately owned but situated in Abington?
It's privately owned, the colored portion is privately owned by Union Point, whatever their entity is.
Private, okay.
Yeah, it's gone through a couple of entities.
I mean, is this swamp lane here, is that what that is? You know what that is?
Outback is.
And do we get taxes from this? Is this a tax?
That is the whole Union-Southfield issue dilemma. Remember initially, when Southfield was proposed, there was gonna be no structures on the Abington portion.
Right, I remember that, I do remember that, yeah.
So we weren't gonna get as much revenue as Wainwright and Roslin, but we also own like, I think it's like five or ten percent of the entire airbase. Wainwright owns the bulk of it, and Roslin owns a smaller part than Roslin and Wainwright, but we own the smallest chunk. There's now a proposal, when Union Point took over and the current owner, that they're proposing some commercial development in the portion that's kind of closest to the existing development, but not out on Spruce Street.
Okay.
If you walk off of Spruce Street going into the woods, you'll, you'll get wet. And this is just a copy of that law that we were talking about, chapter one eighty-three fifty-eight. That essentially, sorry, no, I'm copying, you, you probably know this one better. The, when, when property is shown on a plan, if somebody owns a farm, let's say, and they cut, they drop, they file a plan that cuts up the lot, the farm into a street with lots on each side, it's hypothetical. When he deeds out, when the owner deeds out the lots, if the deed doesn't say anything, then the lot owner has the right to use the road. And the lot owner also owns the road that's along or in front of his lot to the center of the road, and the person on the other side owns the other half of the street. The only way that the landowner keeps it is if they say that in the deed, saying, I leave you lot one, but I'm keeping the ownership of the road. It has to be said in the deed in order to be owner keep. What typically happens anyhow is that when the road is done, county votes to take it as a public way, which I think was kind of a part of your concern at some point. But back in the fifties and sixties, when these lots were sold, there's no mention of any, there's no, the owner didn't keep it, so the owners, Mr. April owns one side of the street and the O'Connor's on the other side of that paper road. So the concern was, if we grant a variance, and they do put on this twelve-foot addition, will it someday be next to a paved public way?
Right, right, because it would be two point five feet.
Correct. Right, the answer is the town has no rights to that property. The landowners have rights, but we don't, we don't include that when we're looking at the zone, we still look at the lot line as being the lot line. But just for the ownership, just to demonstrate, that was your big concern, is that the town does not own the street, it is not a public way, it's never been proposed to be a public way. The only way what happens is the county even voted to take it by owner domain and buy it for me to be legal.
So, so how do we count this? I mean, when you look at, when you look at the side variances, it should be fifteen feet, correct?
When you look at the, yeah, and when you look at the zoning variances, you ignore the street. So the lot line is the lot line along Roslin Street. Okay, for a lot per, when the definition of lot is the line that separates a lot from a street or a layout.
Right, yep.
So, so they ask for the proper requirement, they're, they're asking for a variance from their lot line, not from the middle of the street, even though they own the right to the middle of the street, but that right in the street is subject to the right of the Aprils to use it. They can use it, you know, to travel back, in fact, the Aprils do use it to go out to their backyard.
Yeah, I did see there's like a trail there. The question I had though was, they're asking for, they're asking for a frontage, they're not asking for a side variance, correct?
Oh.
Because it's a paper street, so they technically live with two front yards?
It's, it's, they, the application, let me, I, I didn't file the applications on. The application asked for requested zoning relief for lot coverage in the distance from the property line. And I believe you're.
Says thirty-two and a half frontage variance on Roslin.
On Roslin.
Roslin Street, so.
Yeah. I would say, this is an issue that came up prior.
Right.
Right, that, I think it's really a side yard variance.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's actually a smaller variance than a frontage variance.
Well, you'd still need the frontage too, correct?
Um, I think part of that was.
You need the front.
It's not a side yard variance. It's a, it's an, it's an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Because it's already a non, it's already non-conforming to the side yard ver, to the side yard, correct?
Right, the existing house.
The question is whether this is two front yards, because it's a corner lot.
Right.
And this is the corner where, this is the mustard field area from town, it's one of the oldest parts of town. All the lots are usually small and narrow. So the existing houses, which is pretty much ninety percent of the houses there, are pre-existing non-conforming, meaning the existing houses are already too close to the lot lines on the current setback requirements.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so the issue that the O'Conners had is they need to put this addition on because this house is so small, and the lot is also thin. They can't put the addition on the left side because they need to take away their parking, their driveway. The only place to put it and to square out the house is on the right side. But they need a variance because they're getting close to that lot line, but, but the, the concern of it being a, a new public way, just, right, just doesn't exist there. So really, what happens is Roslin acts as a buffer between the O'Connor's house and Mr. April's house.
So are, so are they asking for a frontage, or?
They don't need a variance.
Again, I didn't apply, so, because you're saying it's more of a finding?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they did, in the, in the notice, it does ask for a finding.
Yeah, because it's a, it's a single-family house.
Right. So they don't need a variance.
So.
Pre-existing non-conforming in terms of setbacks as well as cover, as well as area, right? And they're not gonna, this, where it says in here, lot coverage, relief from lot coverage, what's that relating to?
So are they, were they pre-existing non-conforming for lot coverage already?
No, it doesn't look like.
Or is that a new non-conforming?
Yes.
If that's a new non-conforming, then they need a variance for that.
It's not, no, they, the area it says here is thirteen one ninety.
Yeah, that's what it says on the map.
Right, and, and it's in R twenty zone. So it's, it's pre-existent, non-conforming in terms of both, coverage, uh, square footage as well as setbacks.
Setback, yes, definitely, but the lot coverage.
I don't think it needs variance. I think it just needs a finding with regards to, I think it's front yard, on Roslin.
But there's, let me interpret this. The finding is the lowest level, where if the board determines that basically what you're proposing is.
You agree?
I am. There's no non, if there's no new non-conformity, they don't need a variance.
You're kind of continuing, like, you know, you're not getting closer to the street. And they're saying, if that is a power of anybody, then that's okay.
Is this a street?
The both have buildings, but you can't just.
Right.
It is.
It's a private way, yeah. It's still a street, it's just a private way.
Even with it being two point five, it's okay?
It's still, it's pre-existing.
Pre-existing.
It was pre-existing non-conforming before.
Yes.
It's just increasing existing non-conforming, which is a finding in a one and two family. And it was non-conforming in terms of area, and it's still, it's not increased, doing anything to that, you know?
If this was a vacant lot, we'd have, the house would have to be thirty-five feet back from the road, that's an existing.
Right, it's, it's already a.
We're not getting any closer with this.
This is how we, how we figure these things out, we talk it out. I mean, we just don't rush into things. So.
The other option that the board has is, is to be safe, the board could also issue, the board could also say that the find, due to the fact that, um, due to the fact that the non-conformity is increasing to two point five feet from the street, that a special permit is in order, and issue a special permit. Rather than, rather than a finding, so go up one level. But a variance is not required because there's no, there's no new non-conformity being created by the proposal. There's only intensifying the existing non-conformity.
And doesn't Gale V. Gostis, it says finding?
Gale, Gale does say a finding, it does, on a single, single and two-family home.
Yep, we're gonna open it to the floor. Where else are here? No more conversations, okay? Open it to the floor. Okay, taking it from the floor.
Well, I think, you know, the main thing that was people concerned about in August was Roslin Street.
Yes.
I'm satisfied with that. Having read the minutes, you know, regarding the August meeting, you know, what's being proposed now, I agree with counsel that it can easily be construed as corner lot, which I think makes the wording okay in my book. I'm okay with the finding, you know, under one seventy-nine twenty-nine, that, you know, it is a non-conforming structure on basically a non-conforming lot, we're not increasing the non-conformity.
Right.
I'm okay with that. Andrew?
Um, I don't have anything else to add above and beyond that, I'm just checking, double-checking the section, was it one seventy-five?
One seventy-five twenty-nine, correct?
Okay.
Which is, I think.
One short chart at the end, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
In the back, it said.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Right in the back.
Yep.
Does anyone, anybody want to make a motion?
I'm just, I'm waiting for Andrew to check.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
We definitely want to put in a special permit, is that what you said, counsel?
You want to make a finding that the, that the propose, that the proposal will not be any more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood? And I'm just looking at, um. So yes, you want to make finding that it is a single, it is a single-family home, and that it is a, it is a currently a non-conforming, pre-exist, a pre-existing non-conforming single-family home. The, there will be no new non-confor, the proposal will not result in any new non-conformity, and the proposal will not be any more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, you good?
Sure.
Is that, that's true with the frontage here, the side, do we, we not need, you still say, you know, there's already a non-conformity, we're getting closer than we are now, but the finding would still carry for that?
There, it's the extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Yeah.
And it's a single or, it's a single or two-family.
Little good on the side.
It's a single or two-family home, so it's a.
Great. Do they need to mention the footage?
The two point five?
Keep it in the finding.
You could, or provided, or reference the plan, something.
Before the plan submitted dated June seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Yes. I wasn't here for this hearing, I wasn't supposed to be here for this hearing, you guys.
Oh, well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, like I said. When I saw you at the end of the table, I smiled. I wish it'd come every week.
June seventh.
June seventh, two thousand seventeen. Bayview Survey.
Bayview Survey?
They're just jealous.
All right, town council hop in if I get a little bit.
Okay.
Confused on this, I'll make a motion for a finding for the plan submitted dated June seventh, two thousand seventeen by Bayview Survey, that the current dwelling is a single-family home with an existing, a pre, pre-existing non-conforming structure, and that the new addition will.
Not create any.
Not create a new non-conformity which is otherwise detrimental to the neighborhood?
I'll second that motion.
Yeah.
Second? Paul Beba?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, we appreciate it.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Being after seven twenty, we're almost on time, miracle. Abington Zoning Board of Appeals hold a public hearing Thursday, September fourteenth, seven twenty, on the petition of Sprague Realty Trust, fifty Sprague Street, Hyde Park, for special permit and finding under MGL chapter forty-eight, section six, an extension of the pre-existing non-conforming use for the one seventy-five twenty-one H two, open lot storage of transport vehicles and trailers. And seventy-five dash twenty-one H three, open lot storage of trucks and trailers used for temporary storage, the installation of an office trailer, and also the use. And also use the property as a staging area for Mass DOT Route eighteen widening project. Requesting waiver of environmental impact statement under one seventy-five thirty-five. Property is grandfathered, is grandfathered and industrial zone and presently renamed Technology Business Zone at thirteen twenty-five Bedford Street. Property is located on assesses plan sixty-four, plot seventy-one, in the Technology Business Zone.
Okay, now again.
Good evening.
This is a continuance from our last meeting, correct?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm happy to jump right in. Good evening, I'm Matthew Watzke, here as counsel for the applicant. Next to me is Joe Gioso, president of P. Joe Swenson's. We also have.
Frank Joe Swol.
And Paul, who's the superintendent. When we wrapped up the last meeting, we, we saw a number of action items that we would come back and provide additional information on, an additional discussion with the board. One was a, a need to have a site plan that would show where the proposed storage trailers, office trailer, and equipment storage would take place, and the materials would be stored. Second, to provide some more detail on the second driveway access that's proposed to help the, the flow of traffic through the site. Third, to talk about sort of the general operation of the, of the site and how its, its operation during what we're, we're seeking primarily, the, the temporary expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming use to facilitate the Route eighteen project. So how is that project going to be managed and the kinds of standards that Mass DOT imposes on it? And then fourth, there were allegations at the last meeting by some members of the public about alleged wetlands filling that had taken place, and that, that things had changed so dramatically. And, and we can address that. I, I think I, I'll, I'll take that right off the top, so, we welcomed the Conservation Commission onto the site this past Saturday to conduct an inspection of the site, explain to them what work had been ongoing, and, and provided copies of the previously issued permits, superseding order of conditions, a superseding determination of applicability, and a certificate of compliance that confirmed that all the construction on the site was done fully in compliance with the permits, and then we showed them where the loam pile is, and they were able to inspect it, and their conclusion was that there is absolutely no, zero filling of wetlands that has taken place. And my understanding is that on Monday this week, the commission voted to rescind the enforcement order. We've made it clear that we're happy to talk with the Conservation Commission some more, provide additional information if they need it, and it's just complete transparency. We'll keep them apprised of all the activities on the site. Just for the purposes of the board, the, the area that is being referred to as the topsoil pile is this, an existing entrance this year. And in preparation for this construction project, a loam pile that had previously been located about in this area, which was then trimmed, moved to the back, was processed, and so it's been processed and it's available, so that as the Route eighteen project goes forward, this will be the, the material that's used to dress the shoulders and, and finish off the project. So that's not moving anymore, that's where it is. There, the lines are shown in purple, that's basically where the edge of all the construction that was allowed back in nineteen ninety-seven and was completed with certificate of compliance in two thousand and three, with a, basically a retaining wall around the edge of the levels. And there's absolutely no material that's going to be on that previous living work. So, why don't we just talk about the, the site plan? I suppose I could have stayed up there. Joe, you want to take over from here? You can explain the site plan and where the, first, point out where the existing activities are located, and then point out where you're proposing to, to increase the, the kind of activities by putting in storage trailers and the other materials.
Sure, sure. I'll approach the board, if it pleases the board. So we, we talked in the last meeting about the, the new curb cut, which is still not finalized from that S. DOT, but here it is showing in purple, several hundred feet doors of, of the existing entrance, those from Vineyard Road and, and that neighborhood. We'd like to say that we did it intentionally, but it just is where it suited us best, and I believe it, it does help to, to take a lot of the traffic away from the Vineyard Road intersection. The, the ongoing work that we've done on site is showing on these green circles in the back. Soil processing is what we've done there for many, many years. We intentionally stage it in the back, it is well-protected by, by a buffer of trees. It is, it is outside the, the wetland zones, and, you know, we try our best to keep it clean and, and dust-free, and we could also, you know, welcome any feedback. If you think that things could be done better, we're happy to, to hear about this. As far as the DOT project goes, the DOT has taken this corner of, of the site, there will be a large drainage basin built here, and you'll see many of these actually built along the alignment of, of Route eighteen. Again, the new federal regulations is that they want storm water to, to infiltrate in basins that are owned by the DOT. So they, they purchased that land from us, and whether, whether we were building this or any other contractor, a temporary easement on the job is the contractor's right. And we, we could have set up a staging yard here for four years, and then built, built the basin at, at the end of the job. We could also, you know, we have the right to do that at, at many other locations, and we, we may do that, in fact, if, if it helps our, if it helps our procedure. This is a sort of, sort of a graphical representation of, of the layout, equipment storage, other, other stockpiles in red, our office trailer here, further in the back. And one of the things that the Conservation Commission asked was that we continue the erosion control barrier. We had already installed the, the dark purple lines as siltsawks when, when the topsoil pile was, was placed there. They asked that, that we continue that line for the, for the entire wetland, and we're in the process of taking care of that, as, as they asked. Any questions?
Regarding the basins, so that's going to be a permanent, once, you know, it's a permanent storm, stormwater catch basin. Now, right now, that's approximately opposite Vineyard Road. As you pass that area now, it, there's a fair amount of vegetation and everything like that. I know that, you know, the drawing may be to scale, but your, your marker may not be to scale on that. Is it going to remain a, a screen of vegetation for the Vineyard Road people? And if not, you know, is there going to be some sort of visual barrier, i.e. a fence of some sort?
That, that's a great question. You know, by, by the effect of, of widening the road, the, the natural vegetation barrier that, that you have on, on the shoulder of the road, will be cut down, you know, for many, many locations. And then with the basin being built behind it, I don't know that any vegetation will survive, unfortunately. There is a substantial amount of planting being done on the job by DOT. I can get you the details. If there is any tree or shrubbery, I don't know for certain that it will be replanted.
So the maintenance of that will be done by the state at that point?
That's correct. They, I haven't shown it here, but they have permitted themselves a driveway easement through our main driveway, and then they will have right to access the...
So it's state property now? An easement?
Frank said it was a, it's an easement, not a purchase.
What, I mean, as I was looking at where your proposed, your proposed entrance and exit are, if, that's about an area where the guardrail is, or is it beyond the guardrail and beyond the, like, the mini strip mall, beyond that small building there?
I don't know if there's a guardrail or not.
There is a guardrail, but that guardrail is coming up, and I think the road tone back sixteen, seventeen, or probably when we widened, all that's coming out.
Well, I expected that. I guess I was just wondering, like, I don't, having looked at the site a couple times, I'm not in love with the existing entrance. I think for, you know, one or two trucks, it's tight, but for, I think, the type of traffic you're proposing, I don't think it's adequate. Given that, I'm wondering, you know, what's the barrier for putting another one out? You know, the proposed entrance in, and you said now you've applied to state, and that always worries me because...
That's going to be illegal, thirty-four wide granite sidewalk right there, handicap sidewalk and all that. That's what the state mandates, they don't allow you to do.
But they've not given you permission to do that yet.
Everything's went files, we're just waiting on, we're supposed to have it last week to commit to do it.
Okay. So we're expecting it quick on like...
Yeah, we thought we were going to have it last week, and I think Joe called me. So we're just waiting on them.
In other words, it's going to be, it's going to be very wide, it's going to be up to stand, it's...
That's a statement street.
Is that right there?
Yeah, so that, as part of the application package that we provided to the board, there's this eight and a half by eleven detail sheet, and that has the driveway design that's for the new driveway access.
On the, on the diagram, you have this, or it says scale and office trailer. Is that where the proposed, in essence, permanent trailer is going to be?
That's correct.
They have the full-size, okay.
Not allowed, probably sewer hookup and that sort of thing at that point.
Mr. McGraw, I think that the board was provided with full-size copies of this?
I don't think we have it now.
Okay, well, somewhere in the materials that were submitted, you have the twenty-four by thirty-six. So this, this is the detail of the driveway, new driveway access.
Okay.
So more than adequate to take care of the vehicle traffic coming in and out.
I think some of the concerns that were discussed last time were things like hours of operations, and, you know, number of trucks coming in and out of the property. Do you have any more specifics on that would be?
Yeah. I think Joe can address it, but just as a clarification, so the existing, the existing processing operation does on occasion have loads of material coming into it on a Saturday and sometimes going out on a Saturday, and that makes sense because there's so little traffic on the road then, so it's an easier way to get the vehicles into and out of the site. That we're not proposing to change, so that's an existing, ongoing activity. The application for the expansion of the pre-existing use is to have the processing and the, all the different materials necessary for the Route eighteen project kept on the site as well. And so that will be time limited for when the equipment is coming in and out of the site to do the Route eighteen work. And Joe, what are the time limits that are set by the DOT?
The state allows, or prefers, seven to three-thirty with lane takings, non-rush hour, so nine to two P. M. You could, we could take a lane if we needed to. You know, three-thirty is flexible if there's something going on after three-thirty. You wouldn't be able to take a lane, but, you know, work, especially in the summer, could continue.
It's going to be a mess no matter what. I mean, we're talking about expansion of a large portion of eighteen. We just want, you know, like, dust control.
That's right.
You know, we don't want you working all hours of the night, I mean, especially on weekends, I mean, that should, there should be some type of limit there. And again, the vehicles, how many vehicles are going to be there on site? How many vehicles are going to be staying there overnight?
The parking overnight, again, as we said last time, this is not our only staging yard for the job.
Right.
We have at least two already planned in Waymouth. We are also talking with Southfield about using some of their property. So there's, you know, again, for, the majority of the job is in Waymouth, and the less that our trucks have to travel, the more, the better it is for everyone. We're causing less traffic, we're getting back to our crew more quickly with our truck, trucks. So are we going to have an uptick in traffic here? Somewhat, but we're not planning on a steady stream of trucks all day long, certainly.
Are you able to estimate, give a range of the number of vehicles that would be, that could be stored on the site overnight, assuming that you're working on this end of the Route eighteen project?
You know, it's dump trucks. It could be, it could be four to six dump trucks and/or front-end loaders, six vehicles total, maybe eight vehicles.
Okay. Something that I thought was important to note is that if this site isn't approved for it, that they might need to seek an alternative location that's further to the south down Route eighteen in order to service the Route, the Abington end of the Route eighteen project. And that would be, let's call it counterintuitive, because that would mean the trucks are going through more of Abington along Route eighteen rather than to this location. They have to continue past it. So this is a location that worked out very well for this project because it's on the southern extreme end of the Route eighteen project. So you get the vehicles here, and then when they leave to go do the work on the highway project, they're going the other direction.
So, I mean, what type of processing are you going to be doing there? What type of noise are you going to be creating? Are you going to be putting digging machines back there and working with digging machines?
The processing operation that occurs there now will not change. There's some excavators, there's some front-end loaders. You know, again, it's several hundred feet from...
And that operation there is going to be pretty much with the same seven to three type of setup?
Yes.
Yes?
The extent of the operation that he has, he's asking for an extension, but we don't have, I don't have a baseline yet of what the maximum amount of grandfathered use has been. It's my opinion that he's going to have to establish that with me. What the grandfathered use, what was the limit of the grandfathered use through his tear sheets or whatever he's got?
Okay.
And then you could look at, if he looks at that and says, I'm going to need to exceed that, then he could come to you, and you'd be knowing how many, how much more of that trailers and trucks and storage he's looking for. And that hasn't been established unless I'm incorrect.
They're asking.
And then the other thing that has never been asked for since the beginning, and was always required back since eighty-six or seven when he started, was a special permit for open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial or industrial use. That has never been issued, never been applied for ever, and that would be a new thing that they're going to, in my opinion, need to apply for, which is allowed by special permit in the industrial use, was back then, and is in the TB use now. And I think those two things need to be established, so for right now.
In terms of the pre-existing operations, there was some question whether or not they needed a permit just to operate that business itself for the processing. Was that ever established? I think the Board of Selectmen is some authority over fill permits or things of that nature. Was that ever determined?
This, the material that, in my opinion, the material that's being brought in is not fill. Fill is used to raise the elevation of a property. This is material to be processed and then removed and used elsewhere. So I don't see it as a fill situation. There was fill originally on the site with permits from DEP and conservation, as I've seen in the records, but that has long since had place a long time ago.
Is it in your opinion, Michael, that this is a grandfathered business?
No questions? All right, I'm going to open it up to the floor, but one at a time, please. I know we can get a little emotional here, but one at a time, okay?
Take your name and your address.
Go ahead.
Hi, Kathy Creighton, this is Vineyard Road. I want to talk about grandfathering. I submitted a letter that shows some aerial photographs on the Mass D. E. P. website. Those, he did build the property, did have permission to build the property, working with conservation and DEP. There's some issues, if you read the meeting notes, but he did have permission to do the billing. However, the gravel crushing operation from what we can find didn't start until much later after Technology Business was in place. I don't think that we have proof that the gravel crushing operation started until well after two thousand. If you look at the photos that I submitted, the ones that I have, I show the nineteen nineties ones, tree, and the two thousand and one, where it shows the billing, two thousand and five, where it shows the billing. We don't see the equipment that exists there now for gravel crushing, till two thousand and two thousand and five. I think it's a reuse, the gravel crushing. I believe they're also having a asphalt action, soil processing, which they don't have, or they don't know what. I don't believe this grandfathered, because I, my opinion is that the proof lays with the owner and the applicant to prove that that existed. I don't think we have that proof that I've seen. It could exist, but I've not seen it, and I don't think I have that evidence. As far as the environmental impact statement, I think we should require one, it's a pretty darn big operation, it's probably a place that we would want to do actually at the end of my day. Noise, stormwater, stormwater, and dust, and to get some idea of what's actually going to be there in the traffic study. Because there's going to be, I have no idea, but we expect during the day there's going to be personal cars, extra construction vehicles that are going to go off. There's going to be some vehicles there, but what vehicles are going to be there? They're taking material elsewhere. And I think we require that environmental impact, so we'll get all that information and make a better informed decision. I had two comments on the plan. Is there a setback requirement to where the new road is going to the abiding property?
No.
No.
It's not a structure.
You can put the new driveway right next to the abiding property?
It's not a structure. From a local perspective, it's not a structure?
It's not a structure.
From Mass DOT, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. It was just a question, I don't know that answer. I know that there is a strip mall right next to it. And it would be good if you folks could take a look at the storm system. Conservation did approve, conservation plans that DEP approved. There is a partial stream of compliance, but it's not clear from the records that appear in conservation whether that's one or two days that it completed. It may have been, but there's no records showing it was completed. And that stormwater system is gone, so the site would know everything that's all being added there. And is the site a tarred, and are you going to create one for it, be a certain type of a tarred? Oh, and I'd like to mention the taxes, guys. In two thousand and fifteen, their taxes were, had, were one point six million, sorry, their valuation for the two properties that they have is one point six million dollars higher than it now is in two thousand and seventeen, the value of actually one point six million dollars, basically that as well. Shows it is vacant land, it's two years of not being used, quote unquote, and that's the definition after two thousand for standing Technology Business. But I was a little amazed that we gave someone a one point six million dollar tax reduction for vacant land, and, you know, there's activity. I think there's, I presented a lot of information, I'm not sure that I've heard anything about what I presented, and I appreciate some of the thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Michael Noonan, sixty-three Mulberry Drive. I own property directly across the street from the new entrance. It's called Helm Street, and I can tell you since nineteen ninety-six, when I bought my property, that they have been there working. I've actually brought bones over, over the years, to them and so forth. And there's fifteen of us in this technology business that own property, and our property has basically been taken away from us, for a better word, because of the technology business. The zoning board itself has used open tree for coming in because of the way that it's set up the zoning. The operations of our trucks, it's all you have on Route eighteen. I have trucks on my property, Kathy has trucks on his property, social terminals, I've got Express, you've got the trash, you've got the buses, it's all trucks. They're two trucks, not to make one bit of difference, I'm making, excuse me. And whether it means anything to the town, back in two thousand and eight, I went after a special permit that was approved by the zoning board. It was appealed by the residents on Vineyard Road, and it was dismissed by the land court. I'll give these to you if you want your records. I don't know whether it means it'll create a difference.
Approach if you want. That's fine.
We'll take a look.
It doesn't mean...
It doesn't really matter one way or another.
It's already set a precedent, it's on the land court dismissing, you know, my, dismissing the appeal to the zoning board.
Okay.
So I'm all for this, and I think it should be done. And I don't think it's going to make one bit of difference for anybody on Route eighteen when you actually start the operation.
Thank you. Sir?
Vincent DeAndrea, I'm probably on Highland Road. Your question about timing for equipment or operations, seven A. M. to seven P. M. is what Chief McGintz has indicated to me, hours of operation in the zoning board. So that's a, time is timed, spots, and...
I'm sorry, you own a business there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So it's seven to seven, that's what the police chief?
Seven A. M. to seven P. M. is what the police chief says is good, signing. You need to do that, you should notify them in advance, get this approval, if you're able to, you know, it's not emergency, Sunday and Thursday. And twenty thousand people, it's pretty, it's an awful people, it just seemed to be indicating we're trying to disrupt that, but about forty thousand people use the road and to throw decisions, but they need some approval, it's a benefit for the town, you know, so I'm all for it.
Thank you.
I have to answer, I'm sorry. I'm a resident, and I think I'm advocating for the residents in this town. We all take eighteen, and frankly, they're widening Route eighteen, and it's something we have to deal with. It's, we're talking about this particular property. It's, we're talking about this particular property, not about technology business, why it was here, or why, you know, Route 18's being widened, we're talking about this property that's gonna impact us. And I think it's gonna have a significant impact on everybody that's here. They're gonna have trucks pulling in and out all the time, we're gonna have traffic issues. And I'm trying to do something that I think is positive, and I, you know, I respect these gentlemen's opinions, but I think that you would find if you talked to any ordinary citizen, we're worried about driving up and down Route 18 on a regular basis. And I'm worried about liability. I hear crashes from my house, and I can imagine that we're gonna have a lot more crashes. And I'm concerned that somebody's gonna get hurt. And I don't wanna be, you know, stand by having somebody get hurt on that road because we didn't speak up, because I think there's gonna be a lot more traffic than eight trucks that are gonna be parked there at night.
Thank you. Sir?
Robbie Gray in Vineyard Road. I just have a question on the basin there. You said that the state was gonna build a basin, but they, I don't know what the town's saying, so I was wondering what's, what's gonna happen, like, in the meantime? Is it still gonna, you know, the water from Vineyard Road, is it still gonna drain into the drains that's there now, until they build up the basin?
Yeah, the drains that's there now will not be interrupted.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all right, oh.
Traffic study, what land impact, environmental assessment and all that was done when we, I'm friends with Joe Yoso, the trust, the Spainvillity Trust, was done when we first applied to upgrade our property. It was all done, it was not done. In 2001, we had a similar issue that we have now. The town manager wrote me a letter, asked me what was doing, if it was permitted, or some of the others were complaining, didn't tell me where the others. And I went in, I showed that our operation, say we all way in the back, and nobody sees us, nobody hears us, it was dust, it was, spun out in the air. We've been there in 2001, and we have records. I have provided that to the commission, to the board. As far as the taxes concerned, for years of our assessment on that property was very high. And all of a sudden, because of the taken, and dramatically was reduced, and I had a refund on the tax, because in that side way, if we had the appraisal the way it was, was being taxed on, they had to pay me three times more for the taken than what they paid me. So that's why the evaluation has dropped. It's not because we applied for the evaluation, or for an AP. It was done solely by Messup and the town for their assessment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close it to the floor now, close the floor. Okay? Back to the board.
So ultimately, what's before us is questions of 175-21-H2 and 175-21-H3.
Right.
Okay? Which is the open lot 21-H2 is the open lot storage of transport vehicles and trailers. All right, and H3 is open lot, uh, storage of trucks and trailers, for temporary storage. All right, also, um... Where is the one for the, for the trailer?
That was underneath vehicles and trailers.
Okay.
And then trucks and trailers.
Basically, the office trailer, so it's H... Which one covers the office trailer, H3 or H2?
Trailer for temporary use of storage?
Three.
Is that, my understanding is that office trailer, the intention is for that, if it goes through, to be permanent, correct?
I thought those are five years.
No, but I thought Ms. Yoso was going to use it on and after. So I just wanna...
Yes, just to be clear, the request for the expansion of the pre-existing after property for the open lot storage of, of, on the installation of the office trailer?
Mm-hmm.
This specific structure right here.
Right.
And with scale, and so that's the only thing that's covered under that provision.
Which one?
Is that H2 or H3? H2 is transport vehicles and trailers, and 3 is trucks and trailers used for temporary storage.
You're not saying it's an office trailer, install, installation of a, of an office trailer?
It could also have equipment stored inside, so arguably, it would be under both of those provisions, but that's...
Looks like it's under 3, though.
It's not really a principal building, because it's not on a foundation.
It's, no, and trailers is what, um, we don't really have something that applies to that. And I might wanna suggest, and I don't know if it works, that if you take the wheels off it, it's no longer a trailer, put it on blocks, and by right, in TB, you can have an office.
Well, we were looking at it as, as an office that's, that's facilitating the processing activity, and the processing is the pre-existing legal non-conforming use. It's not going to be an office for, for business technology. It's gonna be an office for the, for the, for the processing. And so we viewed that as the expansion of the pre-existing use, because we're putting it in office so that guys can have a bathroom to go to, and a place to keep their records, and store basic equipment, hard hats and things like that. So that would not actually be intensifying the, the processing activity. It's just a convenient place for the employees to put their, their safety equipment and make phone calls.
I'd have to refer to counsel on that.
So I guess that's my question, do they need permission from us for that? Is there no mission in request?
Look at the office.
Or is it, is it allowed by right, and it's not a big deal?
Two and three is where they're at, but I don't think that really...
I find, I've seen the irony in it, that I'm arguing against it being as of right. If you guys were to rule that it's as of right, then we're perfectly happy with that, right?
Again, because it's... Grandfathering industrial, that's allowed, correct? That's what, yeah.
I think so, but there's an oddity because...
I think it's two businesses.
Financially, professional offices, other than those.
Other than these, other than modern these, this is home office. And it's not...
You know, you put a carport up, and it's just stakes in the ground.
Yeah.
You don't have any...
Professional office in TB.
Now you gotta come see it.
I don't know.
Regarding the comments from... I think regarding, in my opinion, regarding a traffic study is, whether it's occurred, as Mr. Yoso said, or it hasn't, I honestly don't see the benefit of that on a road that's basically getting dug up. And why, I don't think that's necessary.
Does the state own one, by any chance?
Not for a project like this, I mean, this is something...
I mean for the, I mean for the product itself.
I'm assuming they have.
Yeah, right.
For...
If I may, gentlemen, if you address the question of the traffic study by the state?
Yeah, has it been done?
When, when Mast dot went through the whole MEPA process to get the approvals to do the project, it included a traffic study, it showed the need...
Right.
To do the highway widening and everything, so that there's been an intensive study.
Of course, that goes right past...
And it goes right past the site, so it's considering...
One has already been done.
And I suppose that what the gentle lady from Vineyard Road was referring to was basically the, a traffic study based on the impact of trucks on this particular lot. I don't, I personally don't see the necessity of that, but I'm only one person on the board.
Also, it's about the driveway access, so the design of the driveway is a design that's specifically prepared to have the approval from the state highway access permit.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So their, their primary concern is about safety of vehicles exiting and entering the highway from, from this driveway.
And is conservation going to be coming back upon the property once you've completed the proposed sill fence that they've asked you to do, which is...
We've, we've told them they're welcome to come and inspect the property at any time they wish, and we'll be letting...
Sorry, we've closed...
We have closed, yeah, we have closed the floor.
I just wanted to tell you what they said at the last meeting.
It's closed.
Was that they were gonna meet with the applicant on October 25th to talk about stormwater prevention plans and that kind of thing.
Okay.
And that's all, I just wanted to...
And that's...
Okay, that was all I wanted to say.
Okay, yes.
Your opinion, counsel, on the trailer?
My opinion on the trailer is that, um, I think having it as an off, having it, if it's not, it's not gonna be temporary, it's gonna be permanent, then it probably makes more sense to have it as, as an office, because the two...
Take the wheels off?
Two, yeah, two and three, both, two and, two and three don't...
Do they cover?
Fit, yeah, it doesn't really fit.
Can they, can the wheels stay on it for a period of time, or does it have to, basically, once the stub is connected, the sewer is just connected?
Well, well, if the office is, the office would be an as-of-right use, so if the, um, if the special permit is for a temporary, if, if you wanted to do a special permit under 3 for temporary storage, and then they decide to take the wheels off and it becomes permanent, it's as-of-right, it's an as-of-right use. And so the special permit simply just goes away.
Okay.
They don't need it, because it's an as-of-right use. With this, with this project and this property, I would agree with the building inspector, I would agree with Marshall, that what, what needs to be determined is the intensity of the grandfathered use, because then you have to determine if it's being extended or not. And right now, I'm not sure if you guys are comfortable with what, what is actually being done on the property. And so I, I think that does need to be maybe determined a little bit more. When I was first involved in this process, I was asked by the planning board regarding fill of the property, under the general bylaw, under section 49 of the general bylaw. And I had given advice to the planning board to determine if fill was being brought to the property, and if the property was being altered with that fill, if the property was actually being filled. There's a difference from, between property, between fill being brought to a property and a property being filled. And so I had advised the planning board to determine whether the property was being filled, or if fill was just being brought to the property as part of the operation at the property. And so that, that's how I initially became involved in this. And then, um, I assume, the planning board then, I assume, determined that the property was not being filled, it had already been filled back in 2000, I think, in 2001, with permits, with permits from DEP, conservation, et cetera. So I, I will say, I was a little surprised. There was a letter dated October 3rd that was submitted to the, um, to the zoning board of appeals, and the letter ends with a statement that, stating that, um, building enforcement continues to state there's no issue at the site and it's grandfathered, he has not followed the planning board requests at two separate meetings, or that of town councils. I just wanted to make it clear that I had not advised the building department to do anything regarding this. My advice was to the planning board to determine if the property was being filled, or if the fill was only being brought to the property. But with regard to the grandfathering, there's a, a, going back to the grandfathering, and some of the comments that were brought up tonight, one of them, with regard to the, to the taxes, that really has nothing to do with the use. The, the use, obviously, a use could be on one acre of a 23-acre property, it could be on all 23 acres. If, if 20 acres were vacant, and only three acres were being used, and they decided that they wanted those 20 acres to be vacant, or price reduced, or assessment on those, but again, that has nothing to do with zoning. And also, with regard to whether the property, whether there was ever, the use was ever abandoned on the property, that has to be, that has to be proved by whoever's claiming abandonment. And I can say that, that that, that's a very high hurdle to prove that a use was abandoned, because with abandonment, you have to prove intent. And so, so, someone from, some, an outsider would have to prove that the owner and operator intended to abandon the use for over two years. So there would have to be proof of electricity was shut off, there was a going out of business sale, signs, property was sold, things like that. And I don't, I don't think any of that, I don't think we have any of that in front of us. So those are just some of the things where, from the submittals that we received.
So it's definitely a grandfathered in, definitely grandfathered in.
It appears that, it appears that the use has been going on since before the zoning changed.
Okay.
So then, if I may, um, Marshall, well, so I, I see two things in front of us now, which is, in Marshall's opinion, the petitioner still is in need of a special permit for open lot storage of goods and materials, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
And you also need to determine, for want of a better term, a threshold of the existing use, and then to determine if...
Yes.
The proposed use is a, is exceeding that.
They will have to decide whether the, after a determination is made of the level of activity, that the maximum level of activity they have had, if they're based on that level that I decide to accept, and then they look at, are they going to exceed that level? That's when they would need to come to you with the H2, H3.
Okay. So given that...
So I think this maybe should be continued.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, is this something that at this point...
Can we, can we continue it again?
Needs to be re-continued?
If, if the applicant agrees to continue it, which I think would be in their best interest, particularly because it appears that an additional special permit might be required, so they could then appeal, they could then apply for that special permit in the, in the meantime, get everything together, and then come back one more time with everything.
So given that, then I guess the last question is, um, both Andrew and myself basically had to sign the forms, because we were not here in August, saying that, you know, and those forms were basically in effect because it was for one meeting, not an extension. Does that negate us in our ability to be the voting members on the next one, or is that...
No. You can only, you missed one meeting, one hearing, that's fine.
Right, so it wasn't a sec, even though it continues, we're not, all right.
We were at the...
But we couldn't do, we need the applicant's, we would need the applicant's assent, and, and... Because we are under the timeline, so...
And do you agree to it? I mean, do you understand what counsel's saying about this?
I, I do. I, before we make a decision on, on whether to agree to a continuance or not, I'd like an opportunity to talk with my clients. But, but before we get to that, um, the application that's before you for the expansion of the pre-existing use is not asking for an expansion of the pre-existing processing activity itself. It's asking for the temporary expansion associated with whatever's necessary for Route 18, so to store the materials and to have the equipment come in. But the, the pre-existing processing activity, which has the crusher, and, um, screen, all that, these models, that activity would stay exactly the way it is. We're not asking to extend that, and we're perfectly... And we're perfectly willing to provide Marshall with some documentation about the extent of that activity, but for this application, we're not asking to expand that, because we consider that pre-existing, and this project won't actually increase the intensity of that activity. Whatever was gonna belong there is gonna continue to belong there. The special permit that we're requesting to expand and not conformity on the site is so that, is so that we can have other areas that have materials stored on them that are specific for the Route eighteen project, and to have the equipment parking in this area, and have the, the equipment, you know, like, hard hats and jackhammers and things like that, stored in storage trailers, and to put the office trailer. So, so we're trying to distinguish between the longstanding, ongoing activities here, which we're not increasing the intensity, and the routine stuff.
But the Route eighteen stuff is not a pre-existing non-conforming use?
It's, 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 we're viewing it as a, as a, as an expansion of this non-conforming activity on the site, which included material storage and, and, and the processing, to the extent that there's any processing with that. I don't believe there's actually gonna be processing of the material that's brought in, it's just the storage and the equipment storage.
So, so this, so that this would be a special permit to expand the non-conforming use? The non-conforming use is the processing and the stockpiles, what you had mentioned is down below, so you really are asking to expand all up above?
Temporarily, and I could see this, what, the way, the way we phrased the...
You actually just really messed up.
The way we phrased the application, what we're asking the, the board to do is to grant the, the intensified use, specific to the activities necessary to build the Route eighteen.
You can't, you can't, you can't expand an intensified use, you, you can only expand what's there.
That's what I, that's what we're asking.
Yeah, so, so you can only, you can only expand what's there, so what's there, the Route eighteen stuff is not there yet, so you can't expand, you can't expand that.
Right, right.
So you're only expanding what's, what's there, and what's there should have, can only have been things that have been there since before two thousand and two, or two thousand and one?
Oh.
Oh, one, I think it was.
Two thousand, I think, is when the bylaw was changed.
Two thousand, is when the bylaw changed. So whatever was pre-existing, that's grandfathered.
What they would do.
That's the only thing that can be expanded. So you can't say that you're expanding the Route eighteen stuff, because that wasn't there.
I'm, I'm not saying that, Attorney Questle.
It's the way it's coming out, though, I mean...
Yeah.
I'm sorry if that's the way it's gonna be, I'll try to rephrase. We, we have this pre-existing use that had, is primarily processing, but obviously also is material storage, and it also has equipment on the site that's necessary to conduct that processing and to move the stored material around. We're asking for the expansion of that use, which is storage of material and storage of equipment, to have other materials stored on the site, and other equipment stored on the site, where those, those pieces of equipment and those piles of stored material are specific to the Route eighteen project. We're, we're looking to expand this pre-existing use, but the expansion is necessary only temporarily for the Route eighteen project, we're not looking for a permanent increase in the intensity of the use that goes beyond the processing that's been going on of, for the long time. Does that, does that make it a little clearer?
It kinda hits it very backward.
Different equipments, different, different materials.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't help me at all.
So would this actually be varying some?
I think, if you're, if they're, I mean...
For the technology business district, because that part is not grandfathered in the current operations, right?
Right, right.
So you would actually...
I mean, I think that, I think that what they're doing is expanding a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Yeah.
And I think that they're, they could probably, a, a special permit could probably be granted, because it looks like the special, it looks like what they are intending to do is similar to what they're doing. I do not agree with what he's saying, that, that, that this Route eighteen business is already there, so, and it's temporary, I don't know.
I didn't say it's there.
But, I mean, you only have one pre-existing non-conforming use.
That's what it is.
You don't have processing, and then you don't have piles, and you don't have equipment storage, you don't have different pre-existing non-conforming uses, and, and, and if you do, that goes back to our point of, we need to know more of the intensity of the pre-existing use as to exactly what...
How much of what?
You know, how much of what?
But they're not expanding that, they're not expanding that portion for the processing operation, so this is entirely new operations related to...
So you're not processing anymore, you're just bringing in pre-processed material to store?
I mean, if they already have, if they already have equipment storage on the property, if they've already, if they had it prior to two thousand and one, if that was part of the processing, if that was part of the processing...
And storage of materials.
And storage of material, if that all existed prior to two thousand and one, then they would be expanding a non-conforming use, but by saying that they're only expanding a certain portion of it, that doesn't make any sense to me. I would just say that they're expanding a non-conforming use, and in order to do that, we need to know more as to, I mean, I think it's, now I think it's more than, more than clear, we need to know more.
Yes.
But, I mean, it's, again, it would, we would have to, we would have to have an agreement on continuance because of the time limit.
Did you, did you wanna go talk?
Yeah, could you give us a couple...
Yes, no problem, go ahead. No, 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 not, not, floor please, let's close the floor. You're hired.
Do we wanna move on to something else?
Well, we really shouldn't, what's that?
Oh, he said, do we wanna move on to something else?
No, 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 we just wanna stay right here. Did you wanna, anybody wanna get up for a minute or anything?
Yeah, five minute break or something?
Yeah.
Probably a good idea.
We'll have a five-minute recess.
You wanna hear from me?
No.
Got lost?
Thank you.
All right, I heard that.
Well, I really, I already closed it to the floor, so, yeah, I just don't wanna make any exceptions, and, thank you.
Talk to Rick about that, see what he says. Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to record it too. This is, this is... You let them talk to him. Do that really, or, it's like, the more you hear, the more you hear sometimes. Do I have to talk to him? Okay. All right. I am, I still want to say anything, I mean, I think it'd be hard. We're gonna do it right.
Have you guys been busy lately in work?
Yeah.
Cause election season's coming up.
Yes.
There is no equipment on that property.
Yeah, we're busy, very, very busy with forty B's.
Oh, yeah.
So, not a lot of them lately. Never-ending.
They closed it to the floor, they had it, and everyone spoke, I don't think they...
Well, they did.
Yeah. Got the new rooms, and probably were notified, no?
Where's your office?
Spring trick.
Well, it's not bad.
Yeah.
You're in the city, right? You go in the office a lot, or you kinda bonking around?
Um, I rarely go in five days a week, so probably three, yeah. But like, a lot of, like, like, the other night, like, yesterday, I was in Berlin, like, it just made, I just missed it all.
I have that dog.
North of Marlborough?
But, I don't know, one level.
Yeah.
They're asking to experience.
The other day, I was in, yeah, the other day I was in Glanford.
Yours?
Glanford, it's, um, west of Springfield.
You're making that play.
No, I, I Googled it, when they told me that I had a meeting, I had to cover a meeting in Glanford, I, I literally Googled it, 'cause I, even I had never heard of it, and, um...
Thank you, Rick, that was driving me nuts, though.
I mean...
Hey, give me your phone, I'll level it off with your phone.
That's my, that's my presentation that I spent a lot of, uh, time on, using it as like a... Good, oh, God, it's the last time I give you guys a presentation.
Listen, I agree.
Oh, sure.
I was trying to just hold one corner.
Definitely looks like equipment.
Okay, here we go again.
All right, I'd like to take one, one more case to try to clarify what we're asking the board to do. It's not so much a matter of, it's a question of where is the stuff? So the material is necessary for maintaining, to store it on site, for real processing, we're not asking for a permit for this processing. It's a question of the aerial extent, so we previously had stuff back here, and topsoil filed here, what we're asking for is to be able to store materials in this location, equipment parking here, the trailers, and then additionally area for stockpiles here, where nothing had been stored before. So we look at it as, it had pre-existing use, which the building inspector has agreed existed, but it was never up in this area, it was up in that area, so we're asking to be able to do that on a temporary basis.
This area here, this present stockpile, a berm of topsoil, so we always had rock piles on this area too, stumps, whatever we had, as we had the big pile, we lined it up, and we had rocks, when we used up, we brought them back, and so we thought, we always used with this area, this area for it, as, as needed. It's not that we, all of a sudden, we change this, what we were doing. By the way, as far as I know, the zoning was done in two thousand and three, not in two thousand and one, it's two thousand, it's only was in two thousand and three.
Sorry.
Does that clarify anything to you, counsel?
No, well, it sounds like it's open lot storage of goods and material used in connection with a commercial or industrial use.
And there was no special permit of agreement?
Which is H2.
Which is H5.
Five.
H5.
That's the one that has no, that's the one that has no special permit. That's the one that needs a new special permit.
So for H5 and not, not H2 and H3?
H2 is the open lot storage of transport vehicles and trailers, and then open three is the trailers, that's just for the orange, the open, but H5 is what he just described he needs, and that's what they have not applied for yet.
Just clarifying, H2 and H3, if they're grandfathered in the industrial zone, do they still require those special permits?
That, that's for the expansion.
Expansion, okay.
Um, and I think it would just be the H, I think it would just be H3 for that trailer, but they, they definitely, I, I, well, I, I, I don't wanna say definitely, because we don't know the extent of what's there now, but, or what was there, but it appears most likely that they need the special permit under H5.
H5, okay.
Particularly with what was just explained.
Is it possible or advisable to make motions on what's before us, or is it, and then have them come back for H5, or is it...
I mean, that, that is something that, um...
They withdraw, or, and, and ask for everything at once, or...
There, there's a whole bunch of ways that this could be done procedurally, it could be, it could be continued with the assent of the applicant in writing, in the meantime, they could file the petition for H5, the special permit, everything could then be taken all at once. You could, you could close the hearing on H3, and you have ninety days to issue a decision, and based on what you have, if that, you know, the extension of the non-conforming use, you know, pre-existing non-conforming use, based on the information that you have, or they could, and then they would still have to file, they would still have to file for a special permit for H5, so they'd have to come back again. Or they could withdraw this without prejudice, and they could come back with a new application for H3 and H5.
And we decided that H2 was no longer...
It doesn't appear that H2...
Applies.
Applies at this point, because they're, it, it appears to be a trailer to be used as office, not really.
I think the reason that H2 was included is that some of the equipment that's stored on the site is the equipment used to move the material around.
Trail dumps.
Okay, then, I mean, then H2 can stay.
Okay.
So what we're saying here is that H5 has to be...
But it's temporary, so it would be H3, it wouldn't be H2, 'cause it's temporary, you said, so it would all fall under H3.
That is the only one that says temporary, correct?
Right, 'cause you, you clarified that it was temporary.
It's, it's for the duration of the Route eighteen project.
Which is five years, you said?
We're estimating.
But the trailer is not temporary.
The trailer is by right.
If the, if the trailer, if the trailer goes on blocks, then it's by right, so it doesn't matter, but I took, I took two off the, off the table, because I thought that it was temporary, but if, if it's not temporary, I mean, and again, that's up to the applicant, but I, I thought that he had said that it was temporary, and that's why I put everything into, into H3, but...
Can I say something else? You can go to the office, trailer on blocks, it would be permanent, because that's what was intended in the first place. I also like to say that next month, this project is gonna get started. We could have stockpiles all along Route eighteen, and impeding traffic, and the delay in the construction, the, the lane that's needed, or we can bring all the material here, you know, gonna take, it's gonna be taken down, topsoil, rock, rock walls, stumps, all that kind of stuff, they could go here, or could be left piled up along the Route eighteen, causing a major traffic problem. It's up to you. You don't wanna come back again for the same thing, or something, we only meant temporarily to make the use of this property as our staging area for the Route eighteen project, that's what to say, nothing else.
But we can't grant what, we can't grant what you haven't asked for, sir.
We're not asking to change our operation, our operation, we're gonna use the same way as we have used before, the same areas, that's what we're all about. That's what we're all about.
Well, we have found that H5, open lot storage of good materials used in connection with commercial or industrial use. Our council is saying that's something you're going to need. So...
So, I'm sorry. In your opinion, for them to be fully, for them to be fully operational, H5 would have to be granted. It cannot be granted tonight because they've not asked for it.
Correct.
And we're a public hearing.
Correct.
Is it advisable to vote on what's before us tonight? Or have them withdraw everything and come back at once? Or as you said, we can close the hearing and we have 90 days to make the decision.
It's a special permit.
Is it 90 days from when they filed the paperwork, which was because this is continued?
Well, if it's a special permit, you have 90 days from the close of the public hearing.
Counsel, do you understand what she's saying about the, the five?
Yes.
Can I make a change on the application right now, like initially, so you can vote on it?
It's a public hearing, so it has to be announced. It has to be advertised. Blown up the flagpole. Just a minute, sir. I'm sorry.
Also, H5 was never allowed, even with prior zoning. It's still needed a special permit.
And that's something they should have had basically from the initiation of this operation?
Oh, really?
So it's not even an expansion of use, it's permission for use at that point?
What I, I would urge the board to close the hearing on this application. I'll leave it to you to decide whether to vote right now or, or wait until the next proceeding. And we will file the application for the approval under H5 as soon as we can get the paperwork together.
And what about two and three?
Well, that's the point, is if we close the hearing, then we have 90 days from the time the hearing is closed to make the decision. Theoretically, counsel can refile, we can meet again in... Next month, and we could rule in total.
For everything? Again, we want to make sure we do this correctly. I mean, because it can be appealed. We don't want to be the reason why.
Oh, excuse me, July 17th, 2017. It actually doesn't have a filed date on here.
Yes, sir.
What, what I'd urge the board, not just to close, but if you can bring yourselves to vote on it, the right to have the storage of the transportation vehicles and trailers and the temporary storage is important to the Route 18 project. So we really prefer not to have this wait until a month from now to have a vote on it. As Mr. Johnson indicated, construction is starting. They're under, they're under an obligation from the NASTOD contract. They're going to start. And this is a logical place to put the trailers and the transport vehicle.
I don't, I'm sorry, sir.
I mean, realistically, for closing, practically speaking, for closing the hearing on those two, then...
We'd be bringing it up again.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's an illogical place for what they're trying to do. We're just trying to do it correctly. I mean, if counsel doesn't have objection, I, I would consider making a motion now on what's before us, knowing that we're Marshall on our left. Obviously, there's one more hurdle you guys have to do to be fully operational.
Because you'll have to go through him to figure out, again, what the vehicles...
You don't want to get in that.
Correct.
There's the face.
So we don't have to make any special amendments to it? It's going to be in your hands?
Up to counsel. She's the one that's going to defend him, Court.
Tough job.
Counsel.
If you issue a special per, if you issue a decision tonight, you will not be issuing, you will, you'll be voting tonight. You won't be issuing a decision tonight. So you will be voting tonight. But you will only be voting tonight on the orange and the red. The small orange, the red, the orange and the small red, those two things.
Correct.
Equipment parking is this, is this.
But as counsel says, storage of materials...
No, stockpile, that says stockpiling.
I'm sorry, I, I missed.
The parking, is this what we're talking about?
Equipment parking and these, these red items are, are the, the storage trailers for equipment.
Okay. So that's what we're talking about today. We're talking about the parking and the storage equipment. We're not talking about the, the materials and goods.
That's right.
So, so only, so if a decision is issued by this board in, in, in the affirmative, in favor, then only trailers could be placed on that property? If there's...
Trailers and trucks.
Trailers and trucks.
Then if there's stockpile, stockpiles for job, where it says that, then they're out of compliance and...
And that would be H5, correct?
Right, because there's no H5. H5 is not applied for.
So you cannot, as start of the project, you cannot store goods and materials connected with a commercial...
And, and the trailers, nothing can be done until a decision is actually issued. This is just a vote.
Right.
Okay.
With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion on the petition of Sprague Realty Trust, 50 Sprague Street, Hyde Park, for a special permit and finding under Master General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, an extension of the pre-existing non-conforming use for 17521H2, which is open lot storage of transport vehicles and trailers. And 17521H3, open lot storage of trucks and trailers used for temporary storage for the installation of an office trailer. Also approving request of the waiver of environmental impact statement under 17535. Property is grand, property is located on Assessors Plan 64, Lot 71 in the Technology Business Zone. A second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, again, you're going to have to come back on the H5. Right, Counsel?
Where's the impact statement listed in here? See that? Where's the, where's the impact statement?
I didn't see it in the application.
It's not in the application. I'm looking.
It's not in 35 either.
One second, Clarok.
So where did you read, oh, you read it off there. I see where you read it.
I think there was an additional document that was similar with this.
It being after 7:10, likely. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold the petition of Ronald and Linda Parkinson, 130 Cynthia Road, Abington, for a special permit under 17532I to allow an accessory in-law apartment at 130 Cynthia Road. Property located on Assessors Map 51, Lot 26 in the R30 Zone.
Hi, how you doing?
Previously...
We don't bite.
The environmental impact statement was submitted as part of the NASTOD proposal, so we're questioning it. Sorry.
That's okay. I'm going to speak on behalf of the Parkinson's. I am the owner of the subject property. It's a vacant lot in the new subdivision known as Century Estates. My name is Jack Redden and I do business as CE Development LLC. As the owner of the lot, I have an agreement to build a house for the Parkinson's daughter and son-in-law. And they would like to have an accessory apartment, or also known as an in-law apartment, attached to it. And I've provided you with a site plan depicting the location of the building. A single-family home with the attached in-law and the three-car attached garage. I've gone through the requirements of the in-law apartment bylaw and I feel like we comply with all of the regulations. I think, I won't go through each one individually unless you have a question on it. But I think most specifically, this will, this in-law apartment will be occupied by no more than two people. They are family members. The attached in-law will be less than 900 square feet in area, in living space. So on with respect to the other regulations. So I hope that you will grant us the special permit and we can be out of your hair quickly, much more quickly than...
Is that a joke, sir? So there's no setback, variances required on this, correct, you know, all your setbacks? And this is a corner lot, so the apartment is to the rear, correct?
Well, let's look at it this way. The, the main house is fronting on Cynthia Road. The garage and the in-law will, will be facing Murphy Street. The main house is 30, it's depicted as 37 feet off of Cynthia. And the apartment is...
52.
It's about 50, 50, it'll be 50 to 60 off of Murphy Street and 40 plus off of this neighbor.
Do you have any renders?
Uh, yes.
And the, now the owners are...
My daughter.
Your daughter, so...
And in-law.
They have to annually sign it affidavit with the building department. Which is, Marshall and I'll basically say that they're only having relatives live in the unit. Okay, that's a requirement. You want to open this to the floor, sir?
Any questions, huh? Everyone's good? To the floor? Okay.
Is there anything from SOWR on this?
Yes, there is no, apparently no bearing on the SOWR system. Anybody? Nope? All right, I'll close it to the floor. Back to the board.
In that case, I'll make a motion to approve the petition of Ronald and Linda Parkinson, 130 Cynthia Road, Abington, for a special permit under 17532I to allow an accessory in-law apartment at 130 Cynthia Road. Property is located on Assessors Map 51, Lot 26 in the R30 Zone.
I will second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Cast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to take it? No, that's good.
Picking up the pace.
Yes.
Alrighty, it being after 7:15 PM, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of David Federico, 735 Greendale Ave., Needham, for variance under 17521A3 to construct an attached three-unit townhouse with special permit under 17535 to construct within the floodplain wetland protection overlay district at 228 Washington Street. Property located Assessors Map 51, Lot 9, in the R30 Zone.
And 51 Lot 9, subject to system development fee that must be paid to the office before building permit sign-off from the SOWR department. Counsel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, this application was denied within two years. So this is considered a repetitive filing. And it appears that procedurally, they have not been to the planning board yet. So they do not have a planning board recommendation. And so the zoning board cannot act on this until they go to the planning board.
I'm aware that, I'm sorry, shout out. We're that statute, but as we read the statute in the way it's been applied in the past, that would be, it says, "No appeal or petition which has been unfavorably and finally acted upon by a special permit granting authority shall be acted favorably upon within two years after the date of the unfavorable action." But this, and the intention of that, as it says in all the treaties, treatises, I should say, is that, I quote from a case of the purposes, is to give finality to administrative proceedings in the spare-affected property owners from having to go repeatedly to the barricades on the same issue. And this is not the same issue. This is a different project. I would agree completely, if we were to refile the same project that we had last time, you have to go back to the planning board and show that there's been a change in a condition. And I think that's only happened once in the last five years, I recall, and the issue was it was SOWR granted. So there was a change in the conditions and all that allowed it to then be reprocessed, be resubmitted, the same project, be resubmitted within the two years. This is not the same project. I, I don't think that procedure applies in this case.
Who determines, because I've always heard that and the key word's always been substantially different.
Correct. And that's, that's why you have Section 16. The planning board and the zoning board of appeals both determine if it's substantially different or not. And so that's how you determine if a project is substantially different.
Well, it works for two buildings to one.
So, but, and it's, so it could be substantially different, but this, the planning, the planning board still needs to make that determination also.
So they're the ones who make that determination?
And then you also make that determination too.
Would you have the same conclusion if I was filing for a commercial building right now? That, isn't that...
I think the fact that there's still zoning relief required, the same zoning relief that was required before.
I, I mean, I...
That, that I think is the key. So the cases that's come out of Section 16 basically say that to be substantially different is when the applicant addresses the reason for the denial of the previous project. So here, it appears that that is maybe possibly what is being done. But procedurally, the steps haven't been followed.
Counsel?
I respect attorney, whistle, sorry. I disagree, but obviously I assume that you would, you would follow your advice with your own attorney, not me. So, and I don't fault you for doing that. But I would, again, for the record, just say that it isn't a bar for the, the property owner from resubmitting another application, a different application, within two years. That's not what the statute says. It says you can't keep resubmitting the same thing to try to wear down the neighbors and wear down the zoning board. That I'm going to keep coming back at you and I'm going to keep bringing the same thing at you until you agree with me. That's what the statute prohibits. And again, it says the same issue. This is, this is not, this is, if you're, if you recall, we had before, we had two buildings, two unit, two two-unit buildings. We had basements, which was a concern of the board and all. The fact that we're in here asking for a variance, which is, you know, the same thing we asked for, it's because you have to ask for a variance, no matter what you put in here, because it's an R30 zone. The only thing the R30 zone allows on this property is a single-family house. So if I want a two-unit, four-unit, five-unit, or a commercial building, I need a used variance. I need, I need a variance. So to say that you can't come back in here and ask for a variance within two years, I don't think is right. Because you're saying now, sit on this property for two more years and then come back with another idea. That's not what the statute says respectfully. We have, we are not submitting the same proposal. We talked to the neighbors, we met with the neighbors yesterday. We are resubmitting a completely new... completely new, new project, a different parking layout, a different building, no basements. This is a new proposal that can stand its own merits respectfully.
So the cases, one of the cases is, was a, a 21-unit motel was denied, and they came back with a 26-unit motel, and said that that was different, and that was, that was one of them. Another one was a, it was an addition that was denied, and it came back with numerous cosmetic changes. There was a difference in the way that the addition was laid out, but they still needed a variant, they still needed a side yard variance. And the court determined that adding up all of the cosmetic changes, adding up all of the different configurations, did equal a substantial change in the project. But none of these, none of these negated the planning board recommendation. So I'm not really sure how, how he gets over that.
So in this case, or in any similar case to follow, the cadence is that the planning board must rule first?
Yes, and, and I think that, I think that if he was coming in with a commercial building, possibly, that is such a difference that, that would be a whole new filing. But here, it's a residential, it's the same, I mean, it's a tech, it's essentially the same filing with a different configuration. And it's a configuration that I think is addressing some of your concerns. I, I don't, I think it probably is material, materially different, and again, substantially, I don't think there's a problem with this, but I think procedurally, there could be a problem.
And respectfully, I'm, I agree. I'm 100% confident that the planning board would agree if we had to go through that procedure. But what she's essentially saying now is that this property cannot reapply within two years without.
That is, I don't mean to, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
Going, yes, go to the planning board first.
Correct. You can, it can reapply, you could reapply every single month, but you have to go to the planning board first.
No, but what, yes, you're saying, no matter what it is I apply for, anything with this property, because one has been denied, anything that refiles with this property has to go to the planning board first to see that there's been a change to the prior conditions.
That's not what I said. I just said, if it was a commercial building or something completely different, that would, I would consider that a new filing. Here, it's a residential, it's, it's very similar to what you just filed and what was just denied.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Except for the changes that, that you are addressing, the deficiencies in the last application, which is the purpose of Section 16. That is the purpose.
Okay, so I'm sorry, so you're saying if I, if I was here filing for a commercial, you would think I don't have to go to the planning board?
I probably would say no, however, I don't think there's any cases on that. I don't know. I did look at a lot of 16 cases, and I didn't, there's not a lot of Section 16 cases.
No, there aren't.
And I don't know if, I don't recall seeing one where the, the use was completely different. But here, you're still seeking a variance, you're still seeking a residential use, and essentially, the application is addressing the issues that was deficient in the last application, it appears.
And I would reiterate once again, I'll read the statute. No appeal, I'll read the words that apply. No petition which has been unfavorably acted upon shall be, within two years, shall be acted upon favorably within two years. That petition that was acted on unfavorably is not being reapplied to you. This is a different project, and with all due respect, if this was another two, you know, we, last time was a, two separate buildings with two units each. If we came in here with that and had a garage put on there, or had a different back, you know, parking lot or whatever, I would agree. That's the same project we're submitting with some changes that we made, we have to go to the planning board to see if it's significant enough, or why are you coming back so quickly? This is a different project. If we came in, if we were filing for a, a six-unit building, or let's just call it a 10-unit building, that's not the same petition. If we were applying for a commercial, that's not the same petition. This is not the same configuration, not the same parking layout, not the same use, it's a different petition. And I will do with what the board says, but I don't, respectfully, I disagree that, again, whatever we apply for here needs a variance, because the weird thing about this property, it's in an R30 zone on Route 18, a state highway, which allows as of right, a single-family home. Now, there is an existing two-family home, so you might have an argument that you could kind of continue that, but you're still going to need a special permit to construct in a floodplain, no matter what building you build on this property, no matter what. So to say that, well, you're filing for the same thing, that means it's the same petition. Frankly, it's just not fair, because we can't avoid that. No matter what we do, we have to ask for a variance and a special permit for the floodplain. So then it comes down to, are we applying for the same petition, the same building? The answer is no. It's a different project.
But as counsel said, I mean, who do we list to? I mean.
I would also caution the board on the fact that they have to apply for a variance. They don't. They do not have to apply for a variance. If they had to apply for a variance, then they have a case for a taking, and I'm pretty sure they do not have a case for a taking. They do not have to apply for a variance.
My point is, under the use chart, in the residential R30 zone, to replace that two-family, you can't. You can, I can't, I can go to a one-family, go to a use chart. I could make an argument that I have rights to keep a two-family there, but.
So, there you go.
Section two.
I, we will go to the planning board. Obviously, I'm not going to fight this issue, but I just want to state for the record, I disagree. And I respect your decisions, and I, again, I've worked with your counsel, and I respect her, her advice to you.
Okay. So.
Do you want to withdraw, or do you want? No, I think we would just continue. Well, I guess it'd be appropriate to continue. You guys can't act on it favorably until the planning board makes their vote.
Okay.
Would that be appropriate procedure?
Um, yes, when was this filed?
When does planning meet? And do they have, I mean, do we, can we continue till November? Or does it skip to December?
You're fine. You're fine.
Fourth, November 4th.
You're fine. This was filed in September.
Okay. So we can continue till, like, November, whatever it is, like, the 9th or something like that?
Can you give on your agenda?
I think, yeah, because it's, it's really a letter request. It's not a hearing. There's notice, I know.
There is notice.
Yeah, there's some notice to be given, but we, I think we have time. If that's, if there's an issue and we can't get on the agenda, I will notify Nancy, and we would, we would agree to a continuance again. I'm sure I'm going to be here next month for some other reason.
I'd be disappointed if you weren't.
By the way, the Green Wave is leading right now with four, four minutes to go.
What are they playing?
Cohasset.
All right, so.
Make a motion to continue. Petition to David Federico, 735 Greendale Ave., Needham, Mass., variance to continue till, what, is it the 9th? I was just guessing.
Sorry. Yes, it is November 9th.
November 9th at, make them first.
Yes, sir.
Make it first, get you home. 7:00, 7 PM.
Thank you, and I apologize for the confusion, but we're learning a lot tonight, apparently.
We are learning a lot.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
There's one more page.
One more page.
Alrighty. It being after 7:20 PM, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Abington Investments LLC for a 3,343 square foot lot area variance and a 15-foot side yard setback under 17537C to raise existing dwellings and construct three residential dwellings at 191 Central Ave. Property located on the Assessor's Map 24, Lot 121, in the Transit Oriented Development District, Credit TOD.
This property located Plan 24 Lot 122, subject to system development fees, must be paid before permit, building permit sign-off. That is from the SOR.
Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street here for the Avenue Investments LLC. The property is owned by a woman named Josephine Rabel, who's in her late 80s, and just so that the zoning board knows, we've already been to the planning board for our first hearing with the planning board for site plan review in their permitting process, which has been continued, we're still, still continuing to work with this. We're here for the zoning board for two issues, is the side yard, yeah, sorry, side yard setback variance and the lot area variance. The Transitional Oriented Development District is one of the newer districts in town that we created a number of years ago, and is designed and intended to take advantage of its location next to the train station, the commuter rail station, to basically allow for residential uses and mixed uses that would be compatible and consistent with the commuter rail, effectively letting people walk to the train and live nearby. And that's what's being proposed here, and that goes to the planning board also for their special permit. We intend to demolish the existing two-family structure and place it with three two-bedroom townhomes in conformity to the design of the existing three-unit townhomes which are budding and immediately next door to us. This district, the TOD, the TOD district, as we call it, requires five-foot front setbacks, 20-foot rear setbacks, and 10-foot side setbacks, side setbacks on a 10,000-square-foot lot if you build a mixed-use building or a commercial building. So if we were to put commercial on the first floor and residences above, all we would need to do is have, is have the, we could be five feet off the street and 10 feet off the side lot lines. Now, this lot is only 66 feet wide, so we're very limited as to what we can do immediately. But it makes no sense to put a commercial building or a commercial use in this exact location, because it's surrounded by residential uses. To the, to the left, if you're looking at our building, to the left is a three-unit condo building, to the right is a six-unit building, and this one is existing right now is a two-unit building per the assessors' records, and you have a copy of those records. The property was resided in by two sisters. They are elderly, and financially, this has become a huge burden to them, to the point where there was a major roof leak in the building. The leak got into the electrical system. The fire department came in and basically ordered that the electricity be shut off in the building and that the property be vacated. And it's been that way now for a little period of time. She has no funds to renovate, to do anything with this property. She needs to sell. She's effectively destitute. She's living temporarily in Bridgewater, since I'm speaking of the owner now. The building cannot be saved, it has to be torn down, and we are applying to the planning board for the use, which is the residential use. It's not something before the board here, we're here just for the dimensional issues. With the resident, but once we ask for the residential use, if you want to put a residential use in here, the setbacks change automatically under the restrict, under the wording of the TOD district. And instead of having 10-foot side yard setbacks, you now have to have 25-foot side yard setbacks in exchange for residential use. So although the residential use, we feel, is better, fits here, it's more appropriate, and is supported by our neighbors, our butters, with a 66-foot wide lot, the requirement to have 25-foot setbacks on both sides leaves us with a 16-foot wide buildable area, which is impossible to conform with. So we need to have a side yard setback by moving the building, and our proposal is to move the building away from the existing condos that are to our, we'll call it the left, as you're looking at it, which is supported by those condominium owners. So we conform to one of the side yard setbacks, the 25-foot setback, but the other side yard setback, we conform to the 10-year, the 10-foot regular requirement, but not the 20-foot updated requirement. So that's the purpose of our setback, is to locate the building as far away from the other building, so it basically kind of lines up and it looks like the other building does. It kind of fits in, and there's not a detriment to the neighborhood, it's pretty much an existing design in the neighborhood. The lot area setback is, again, once you go for residential, as I mentioned before, if we had a mixed-use building in here, or a commercial building, we conform to the lot area. It's only a 10,000-square-foot minimum. But when you go for the 100% residential use, which we, again, the planning board we anticipate will approve, it has this formula, it says you need 10,000 plus 2,500 per unit, which means, in this case, we would need 17,500 lot area. We have 14,151, and that is the reason for the lot area variance, because of that change in the dimensional requirements when you use 100% residential use. I would just want to give you a copy of the plan that's next door to us. This is the existing three-unit condominium at a Bucksey property that was, it's been in existence for quite some time, and if you note on the plan, they have a smaller-sized lot that we, we're proposing essentially the same building, the same use, a three-unit condominium, much in the same layout, we'd have a driveway, we have parking in the rear as is required by the TOD district. We conform with everything in the TOD requirements, it's just that in order to utilize the property with, for residential use only, then you need the lot area variance and the side yard variance. The hardships are there is that this building cannot be saved. This building has to be taken down, it's a rather large building, it's an expensive building to take down, and to take it down and to try to put in one or two units is just fiscally not going to work. We worked this out, in fact, initially, we were looking to see if we could do this with four or five units. We were able to drop it down to three, we can make that, those numbers work, and again, it's not inconsistent with the neighborhood, it, it fits right in, and we have met with our neighbors, and I know they, they can speak with themselves, but this is, we, we feel, a good plan, a one that will clean up this property and will fit in, in context with the existing residential multifamily uses that are to our left and to our right, and others that are in that immediate neighborhood. There's no substantial detriment to the public good here. The, again, the TOD zoning district is intended to create housing, multifamily housing, in this area, so that they can utilize the commuter rail. There's no derogation from the intent or the purpose of the bylaw, because we were effectively conforming to some of the uses and some of the targeted redevelopment of this property due to the, when the commuter rail came back to Abington, this was then rezoned. The site plan has been submitted, we will be putting in new fencing along the sides of our property in, in conformance with our zoning bylaw. We will have the street trees, we'll have landscaping, drainage, as you see, will go out to the rear. This will all be reviewed by the towns engineer as part of site plan review. If this board were to approve this tonight, it still has to get the approval of, of the planning board in order to move forward. The drainage will be improved, essentially, because we will now be establishing some catch basins in the rear, and the highway department is allowing us to connect to an underground drain pipe that's out in the back of our property that already preexists. So water that is now flowing onto other property will now be cut back, collected, cleaned, and discharged underground. So there'll be improvement there, and we have gone over some of these issues with our neighbors in the three-unit building to our left. It's been a long night, so I won't beat a dead horse. That's the bulk of our presentation. If you have any questions, Mr. LaPointe, the builder is here, I know our neighbors are here, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I hope you'll support this so that we can kind of update and improve this area of town.
So you can explain the hardship again? I mean, you buy any piece of property that has one build on it now, and now you're going to put three.
We're putting one building on it. There's one building now, we're going to have one building now, there's two units now.
But there's three units there.
Right, there's two units now, we're going to put three units in. Right. There's a cost to re.
It is a tight area. I mean, you're talking, I wouldn't buy it today, and the, it is, it's very, very narrow. I kind of understand what you're saying about, this was done in the past, we got that, but I mean, has the fire department checked out this, this area right here?
They're giving copies of site plan review.
18 feet wide access road?
They're, it's part of site plan review, they are reviewing it, it's actually part of our comment.
This is, this is a tight area for a truck to get into, or an ambulance to get into.
Understood. We're, want to build, everything will be built to current fire and safety code. And understand, again, if we were to put in a commercial building on the first, or a commercial use on the first floor, we can have more than three units above, and we can get within 10 feet of the lot line as of right. In fact, we can bring the building up to the front as of right. The parking is of the rear by requirement. So everything you see there, really, is as proposed by the transitional, I'm sorry, the Transitional Oriented Development District, parking in the rear, 10-foot setbacks, we conform to that. We do conform to the 25-foot setback on the front, we conform to the 25-foot setback on the left side, we conform to the rear setback on the right side. It's just you have to make a decision whether the building shifts left or right. With a 66-foot wide lot, you have to have a variance, or you can't develop this property in a 100% residential use.
It's just a real tight piece of property.
Well, it's already existing with a, look at the size of the, of the building that's on it now, you can see it ghosted on that image. Our footprint, the width of the foot, of our proposed building is less than what's there now.
What's interesting, Mr. Chairman, is if you look at the, the use table. What's interesting, Mr. Chairman, is if you look at the, the use table of the dimensions, the Dimensional and Density Regulation on the Todd District, as Attorney Riley says, let's see, side setback is 10 feet with the footnote of 13, which they add maybe actually zero feet by special permit.
Right.
So interestingly, selectmen who voted on this plan were saying in essence that if it was developed as, as, the pure way they envisioned the Todd District, you could put it right on the line.
Right. Selectmen did vote on that. Town meeting voted on that, but yes, you're right.
And, you know, in one way, I think to be fully compliant, you would have a 16-foot, it'd be like a little brownstone sitting there in the middle of the, of the lot.
Right. And we, frankly, we don't believe a commercial use or a mixed commercial residential use is appropriate in this position. Now, again, the use is designed, is, is determined by the planning board in this district, but I would hope the zoning board would agree. With residential uses next door and beyond there, I think the closest, the closest commercial use is Martediansen's Carpet, which is at the entrance to the T driveway. And then if you kept going down the street around the bend, you'd be there at Franny Refrigeration. But in the immediate area, that's all residential. Progress Street is residential. Across the street is residential. So what we're proposing, we think, is conforms with the neighborhood and complies with the requirements of the variance in that regard. The location of the building, you've got to shift it left or right. And we looked at having the building over in the left side with a 10-foot setback, but then we're right next to the existing three-unit building next door. We brought it over to have separation of the buildings.
So, so is there a porch back here or what is this back here in the back of the units?
Decks.
The proposed patios.
Patios, not, not, not decks, right? Not?
Right. Right. Because we want privacy also.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Andrew.
I was just going to say, so with respect to the hardship, your position is that financially you couldn't develop the lot in a manner that would work unless you designed similar to this.
Right. And the owner who, you know, you know, has, there's a, there's an existing hardship now with the owner that she cannot financially do anything with this property. She is destitute. She needs to sell this property, but this building has to come down. So what's going to replace it? I don't think the town wants a commercial use, as I said. I think the residential use is the way to go. Is this a reasonable residential use? I think it is. You have to go left or right now because now the 25 feet kick in. You need to have a side yard variance. That's our hardship. We can't build any residences that are 16 feet wide. Is, is the variance is reasonable? Yes. In fact, it's less, less of a variance that was granted previously to the, the property next door.
Open it to the floor at this point, sir.
Counsel, do you have anything to say? Nothing?
I just think that, I'm not sure that Attorney Riley has addressed the first prong of the variance regarding the soil, shape, soil, topography and how it's unusual. Maybe you could just go through that again.
Sure. The, well, the unusual part of it really, well, it's a, it's, it's a weird and unusual argument. The 66-foot wide lot in this district, because of the combination of the setback variances, it makes it a, a problem, makes it a hardship right there. The shape of the lot is a, is a problem because of the zoning requirements of the 25-foot setbacks when you're only given 66 feet to start with. There, there, you know, the setbacks are handed to us in that way. It's, it's kind of a double-edged sword in that they, they, the town, the TOD District is, is designed to probably, to try to get the multifamily. If we, we don't think the commercial is a viable or a wise way to go just to avoid a setback variance. Now you've got other issues that you're creating with your neighbors immediately by having retail use or office use next door. You're going to have increased traffic with the commercial use. You're going to have different hours. There's different issues that this, the shape of this lot creates for us.
That it?
Just wanted to make sure it was out there.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to open it to the floor now. Anybody have questions?
Mr. Grell, you had asked about the, the fire as far as the access, the 18-foot wide access.
Yeah.
I've been in touch with the Deputy Fire Chief and went over this, and went over the plan with him and, and they don't have a problem, they don't have an issue with the width of the road and they're going to, they're going to file a letter with the planning board stating that.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Go ahead.
You, you kind of hit it right on the head. I, I took some pictures. My name's Larry Cook. I've lived in the neighborhood going on 50 years. And they want to put three units in this place. Where's, where's the hardship? I mean, that's a postage-stamped lot. As far as putting a business in there, the way I read it, in this transportation-oriented district, it has to be on the rocky part. They can't just, they can't just open up storefront. Can't take up more than 25% of the floor space in this building. It's ludicrous to put three condos on a 63-foot wide lot. And they need a special permit to do it in a transportation district. I can't get over, I live down the end of Swinney Street, across the street from this nightmare. And I've done some background looking, trying to find out when this was made a two-family. And as far back as I can find, somebody wrote on a building permit in 1966, handwritten, two-family. But I've, like I say, I'm in my 50th year in the neighborhood. There's never been more than one car parked there and for years there was none. It's ludicrous to put three condos in. There's no hardship involved in this for a variance. And that's just all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Your name?
Yeah, my name's John Toss. My brother Dave. We own the six-unit building to the right of the building. And when the attorney said that they've met with the neighbors, it's not true.
I have met with you.
We have not been, this is the first time we've heard it.
Okay.
And if he's proposing putting the driveway or the access road, he's going to put it right down the side of our property. Overall, I don't have a problem with the building putting three units there. I believe these three women here also own the three condos next door. I think I've met one of them over the years. The building is implorable. The building has to come down. There's no question about it. It's a fire hazard. It's a health hazard. The property's in such bad, bad repair, overgrown. There was an old boat behind there. Pretty funny, play it out. Our concern has to do with the land behind there. How do you address it? Now, the attorney had mentioned something about a pipe talking to the, was it the, the, whatever. No one's been able to find that pipe. That's the problem.
Right.
Because there's wetlands. It's, it overflows. Because of the condition of that property, our backyard is flooding. We put fencing up there. We can't keep a fence up because it's all wetlands. So I, I, you know, I'd love to see the property improved. I'd like to see the, the pipe found and fixed and get some dry catch basins. That'd be fantastic. But I am concerned the fact that we were not contacted and I think we were kind of slighted and saying, oh, these are, you know, landowners, hear about it, which is completely, completely opposite.
Well, let me answer the three issues. Nice to meet you. And I'll let Glenn talk about this drainage in, in just a second or John.
The notices were mailed out to the assessors, owners of record of?
Nothing for the planning board, nothing?
I received the notice. I received. No communication, no presentation of plans, no discussions.
You've said that you had, they met with them.
And you met with them.
I said, yes, I met with, I said I met with you.
They're 25 feet off the lot. Where do one only 10 feet off?
Yes, but I do want to correct you. The driveway is not on your side of the property. It's on the far side of the property.
So the existing driveway is going to be moved to the other side?
That's correct. The driveway's going to be on their side of the property. Okay? The, the drain issue, they're right. There was an issue about trying to find this pipe. Where's this pipe? We found it. We, they found it.
Glenn found it.
Right. And we found out it's, well, Glenn, why don't you speak to it? It's been clogged. He's met with the DBW.
My name's Larry Pointe. I'm an astronaut. Get the ball, you guys. I, I talked to the other neighbors and I, I just overlooked that. Sorry. And I apologize for that. But as far as the pipe that no one's found, the engineers and myself, I went out there with the backup and I located the pipe. So I, I spoke with the town and the pipe is clogged, but it does drain. So I asked them if we could put a, install a catch base in there, cut the pipe, clean it both ways so it works and it will drain everybody's property.
Now, is the pipe draining towards Progress Street?
It goes towards Progress Street.
So it's going across our property?
It goes across yours. It goes across mine. It goes across theirs. Yep.
I understand the problem with the pipe. We're clogged back where they did the train station.
Problem? Well, that was long before that. But I found the catch base in out in the woods and that's, that's where I found it. And then I, I started doing some exploring and then I asked the town of Bozart if I dug a hole and I did find the pipe. And so they, they agreed, put a manhole there and we'll clean the pipe both ways. So that should, that should solve all the problems.
One of the concerns that I would count is the fact that they have condos, they're not going to get condos.
Yep.
But when you build them, you sell them, you're making your money and you move on. And I know you've got a great reputation in town. You've actually done some work for us at one time.
That's right.
But what happens down the road, we have a problem with the, with the drainage. That's the biggest issue. I want the drainage solved.
Sure. The drainage is a, is a town, is a, is a town drain. And you can talk to the highway. I've talked with them already. So it's their responsibility if something goes wrong after that.
And to the best of our knowledge, I don't believe there's any heathmen on our property because of that pipe.
Probably not.
Or ours. You're right. It's just, it's been there for so long. Right.
And I also would want to talk, Mr. Cook had mentioned that he thought there was too many units on this property. I want to reiterate, there's three units on the property next door that has a smaller lot. There's three units we're proposing on this lot and there's six units on this gentleman, this gentleman's lot. Our lot, if you have the assessors' plan that we provide in our package, our lot is .33 acres with three proposed units. Their lot is .37 acres with six existing units. So just to give you a sense, also in the TOD District, if we were to have that mixed use, we're just required to have one parking space for every unit, whether we have four units or six units above. We're proposing here to, we're using, we're putting in eight off-street parking spaces out in the rear. We don't violate the lot coverage. We don't violate the setbacks in the rear or the far side or the front. So we conform in every way we can physically, but there has to be a side yard setback variance on one side or the other. And we, apparently, all the neighbors agree they'd rather have the driveway where we're proposing it.
Okay. Back to the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Duckley, 23321 Drive. As you can tell, we have this and not, not a vibe. But I was brought up with that, you know, the 198 Centar out for many years and a while before Larry Cook got down on one grand seat. So I just think the current property is a detriment to the neighborhood. And I think it's a piece of property that can be developed by the, by the petitioner. And anybody who has seen this work around town knows kind of what he does do. But I think it would be an advantage to the neighborhood to have a new structure, to have that structure gone, to have the driveway on the other side of the lot, to have the drainage issue cleaned up and to have a new kind of cars driving by. I just hope that the petitioner is granted that the neighborhood will be improved dramatically by the replacement of that current building with what is being proposed by the petitioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Your name, please?
This is McGlaughlin, 1995, well, three, part of the condo, next to it, which will be recent, looking like, I totally agree. That house that is next door is even closer than the proposed building's, that we, that the lot will have the, and it's going to actually beautify the street because as you can see it, it's just like you said, it looks like a haunted house. Windows are broken, the trees, like an arduous look. The trees are not properly, and it's dangerous. It's dangerous. So I know it's a small lot, but it's always nice and it's going to actually, they're trying to make it look similar to ours. I just know it's going to be closer to their building. But when something needs to be done with it, it is a natural and it's dangerous. Something's going to happen with the trees. My wish is that the drainage can be done because right now we've got dust and shit.
Oh, go ahead.
But landforms, the reason why, and then the trees, just, just once the trees grow, it's just such a small parcel of land. I just want to make sure there's greenery so we're not looking in these other forms. That's my, my.
And what else? We, we good? Anybody good? All right. So let's bring it back to the board.
I can say, I don't see my hands.
Go ahead.
What, since the driveway's going to be on the edge of the truck to the left, what is the variance for the setback would be on the right outside? But as you reiterated, if that's where you want the variance, I would think you would talk to the actual owners who are going to be affected the most.
Yes, sir.
That's going to be, yeah.
Okay, I understand. I understand.
How many, how many feet are dropping from the lot line?
Seven.
That's awfully close, but I have six units that way.
Yes.
I don't know if it would be better. And I'm sure you have a concern if it was foot long, where I would have this driveway in my side. And that way, that my tenants aren't looking at.
The problem with that, well, I'll let Mr. Riley speak to that because it's not my, not my dog.
Glenn has met with these, the three owners over here, or at least two of the three. I spoke by phone with two of them. And they were present at the planning board hearing, or two of the three were present at the planning board hearing, the first one. Part of the planning, site plan review is they have to have a landscaping plan. So that will all be addressed where the trees are going and what kind of trees and what kind of shrubbery and all that. That will all be taken care of. You're, you're, you're correct. We have to move left or right. And so we try to align the buildings so that they are, have privacy for both buildings. Now, we're also putting up privacy fences on each side of the property, between the properties. There's a short fence on the left side now between our, the three-unit building on the left. It doesn't extend all the way down. We're going to extend it all the way down, cut down the dead trees at our expense and fix the drainage, which is going to benefit all three of the properties essentially if, if we were to buy this property. I would note also for the record, even if we were going to build two units, we'd need a variance for the lot size for two units. I mean, we just can't avoid that. So I would hope that you would approve this so that we can get rid of the eyesore. We could move forward with purchasing the property and build it as it's designed.
Okay. Well, yeah, we're going to close. Nobody else? All right, sorry. I closed the floor.
One other thing I was going to ask you, the plan is proposed, category of the building is fifty percent of a buck high, probably like, in our building is right behind those units.
Yeah. And we're going to have a minimum six-foot tall solid fence because again, we want the same privacy. Okay? Okay. Now I'm going to close it to the floor, please. Please, I need to close it. It's been a long night. We need to close it to the floor.
Could I say one more thing? Why is it not, now we've got a new school. Now, a 63-foot wide lot, all of a sudden, because houses are going for 400, 450 grand in our little town, now we're going to have three units where there was one. And, I mean, it's happening all over town. You know, and this is a classic example of something that shouldn't happen.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, no, seriously, seriously. Seriously, we've, we've gone over enough. So we need to close it to the floor. Just a response to Mr. Cook. Very, very briefly. The fact of the matter is the building is in terrible shape.
We got that. Yep.
The neighborhood is in terrible shape. Mr. Cook lives, I don't know, 300, 400, 500 feet down the street of, around the street. The fact of the matter is the embracing neighborhood needs disbrushed if it comes.
Okay. That's, that's enough. Okay. No more. We're done. Okay? Okay. All right. So let's move back to the board now. Okay?
So the first thing is that the highest petition, the hurdle that the petitioner is looking for is the variance, which is the 15-foot side yard setback. So we say, what is the hardship, financial, shape, topography, or soil conditions? In this case, In this case, Attorney Riley contends that it is the fact that it is a 66-foot wide lot. Interestingly enough, in the TOD district, minimum frontage is only 50 feet.
Yeah.
I honestly don't know what they were thinking when they said that makes a good idea, because, you know, to your idea, you have an 18-foot driveway, or whatever the width of the driveway is on a 50-foot lot, what do you have for a building?
It's tough.
You know, and they're saying, oh, by the way, in the TOD district, you can go all the way to the border, if it's a commercial. So then the second prong of a variance is, is the usage more detrimental to the neighborhood? And, again, it's a two, it has been a two-family abandonment, as counsel has pointed out in the past, has to be proven. So, you know, it is, in my opinion, given that it's a two-family, not that it's a one-family, because there's only been one car there, or something like that, that doesn't prove abandonment.
They have been removed, and also removed.
Right. Shut, shut the electricity, well, the electricity got shut off because, you know, the place is a fire trap at this point, and, you know, maybe Glenn can scoop it up and go put it in Barrett's parking lot for the haunted house, I don't know.
Perfect. And also, I think if you look at the structures around that, it's not derogating from the intent of the district with the multifamily units in there.
Right, but personally, I feel that there's, you know, just because they've done it in the past, you know, why should they do it again? I mean, I personally think that three units in there are way too much. That's my opinion. I mean, that's how I look at it. It's a small lot, you know, as a gentleman said, you're starting to see around this town these small lots, and everyone's throwing buildings in there, and more and more, there's three buildings there all of a sudden instead of two. Or two-family turns into a three-family. I mean, that's what we're talking about here.
I think that's the way the market is right now. You can't put, I mean, how do you put a 2,000-square-foot home on that lot without doing-
That's true, that's true.
And then, you know, without, without doing-
But you're going from a, you're going from a two-family to now a three-family, though that's just a bonus on, on this, because it's a 50, 50-foot.
The actual footprint is remaining the same, you said that, correct?
Similar.
No, no way, no way, they're adding, they're adding.
This is the old footprint, but it was closer to the line.
Footprint's definitely expanding.
The, the total footprint is bigger. If you look at the width of the existing house, the width of our building is thinner.
Mm-hmm.
A commercial building, you're right, we go right to the sideline, we go right to 10 feet, you still have the driveway issue, you're just, frankly, full of hardship issues on this property, but it's designed in the TOD district to encourage this type of development.
I mean, yes, you show us a hardship, but you're putting more buildings in there than there were before.
Well, that's more units.
You're just trying to get more units.
No, no, that's what, that's what helps us justify the purchase. Frankly, if we don't get three units approved, we're not buying this property, because two units will not pay the nut. It just does not work. But if I, and if we came here for two units, I'd be asking you for a 15-foot setback and a lot area setback. I can't avoid that.
Yeah.
And that's rebuilding the exact same thing. Three, financially, that's part of our hardship, is the third unit helps pay for the demolition, construction, the drainage improvements, and basically cleaning up this area.
You can understand my opinion, we have, we have a two-family that's turning into now a three-family, and-
And I would agree with you totally, if this was an R-30, R-40 zone, you know, residential, but this is Route 123, next to the train station. This is what they're looking for to do.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I think, in my opinion, Attorney Riley has, to my satisfaction, proven the hardship for variance. Given the shape, topography, it is multifamily. I'm not particularly hung up on an extra family living there. You know, like it or not, Abington's a better community than Austin.
I agree.
Given that, then I would like to make a motion on the petition of Abington Investments LLC for, what is this, 3,433, 343 square-foot lot variance and 15-foot side yard setback variance under 17537C. Raise existing dwellings and construct new residential dwellings at 191 Center Ave. Property located on Assessors Map 24, Lot 131, in the TOD district, be approved.
I second. Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time, guys, and I've had a long night. Earned your pay.
What, were you paid? All right.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I would second that. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, look who shows up. Oh, my goodness.
I'm awesome, you guys.
And you show up?
50 minutes is anywhere, I mean, I-
Oh, it takes a while, it's a rivalry.
Way to get anywhere.
It's actually, it's too late now, but it really doesn't matter.